Five o'clock officially, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll get started right away with communication.
All right, so I will start by inviting our elementary principal to come on up. And you'll see, I will, I'm gonna work really hard to stay on top of all the tabs today, I've got them all open. So we can hopefully just fill right into. So. Go. All right. Very good. Thank you for having me here again tonight. In my update, you'll notice that first I mentioned the Cherrydale. Fundraiser, that is an annual fundraiser that we do at the elementary level. And we've had a great turnout. Ashley and I in the office have been busy collecting forms and. Cross checking orders and whatnot, and it appears to be doing very well. So I just want to give a shout out to the families of Paynesville Elementary that with their participation. This fundraiser allows our students to do field trips and really helps with that transportation cost as well as other activities. Product pickup is tentatively scheduled for November ninth. Some details to work out there. We've got some volunteers that are going to help with us. Really organize that, that way when families come, they can. Get that distributed in a timely manner. Three fifteen to five thirty is that pickup time. Homecoming, what a blast that was, experiencing my first Bulldog homecoming. And I don't know who I all spoke to, but really what drew me to Paynesville was the spirit and the. The love for the community and the school and all the school pride, and I got to experience that firsthand. Participating in the elementary homecoming festivities. And so we had a parade throughout our school. High schoolers came over and the pet band, and so it was. From what I hear from staff, it was a perfect amount of time, it was short and sweet and to the point. But very festive and very spirited. And I did want to put in a video so you could also feel and see. The excitement, you know, when we have that opportunity to have some of the big kids come down, it just really means a lot. To our younger learners. And so I put together just a short video for you to view if you haven't seen it yet. Hopefully you helped cheer in as much as we did throughout the building, talking with, you know, many teachers and staff. At that point on a Friday, you know, at ten thirty AM, when the parade is starting, you just embrace the spirit and you go along with it. And just enjoy it. So I want to just verbally say thank you to the teachers and staff for embracing that extra energy and. Spirit throughout a whole homecoming week. I also want to provide a staffing update. We currently have two unfilled positions, and we've had these unfilled positions since the beginning of the school year. One being the social work position and another paraprofessional position. We are doing our best on our end, communicating that and getting that out to our, our resources for employment. Really kind of reboosting that. I think we've done that two, three times now since the beginning of the school year, working with Miranda in the district office. You know, getting it posted to EdPost and various places. You know, certainly unfilled positions, as we all know, impact scheduling, impact coverage. And so I've been working with our staff on. How do we juggle and switch and make sure that we are covering where we need to cover? Myself, I'm doing some lunchroom and recess supervision. Maybe typically isn't within the realm of a normal day in the world of a principalship, but. You know, I too, all hands on deck, helping out in that capacity. And so just bringing that to awareness that we're working. You know, to fill those positions, applicant status is very low. So that's certainly a barrier and obstacle, but as soon as we get applicants in, we're looking at those and. Moving forward with our process. And then just what's coming up, picture retake day is coming up this week. We have fall conferences that gives us a great opportunity. To connect with families and parents regarding what's happening in school and connecting with student learning. During fall conferences, we also have our Scholastic Book Fair. So I'm excited to see that up and running. For my first time here, I've heard it's great, we'd have great turnout. We use the media center space to really display that and provide. Opportunities for students and families to come in and purchase books. We have our fourth grade Veterans Day program coming up Tuesday, November eighth. And that's gonna be two o'clock here in the auditorium. And so one thing that we're doing to honor our veterans at the elementary level is doing a wall of honor. And so I'm hoping to provide you some pictures and video with that as students are bringing in veterans that are special in their life. As we honor them in the upcoming days. That's my update for you unless you've had questions. All right, so next on our agenda is secondary principal and. Mr. Orline is out for a couple of days this week, but he's, he attached his report as well. Homecoming week went well, I think to echo the fact that energy is. Just permeating the district is a pretty fair statement. And so I think it was a great week. There was. The middle school and high school student council did a great job planning activities for the week. From the spirit days to the dances, and they did a great job. So a special thank you to. The student councils and the advisors for those two activities. Secondary conferences are coming up October twenty fourth through November tenth. So again, secondary, that will be the window again. Teachers will be making contact with parents during that window. And that is going to then result in an e-learning day scheduled for October twenty seventh, which is the elementary conference day. So just as a reminder that that window goes between those time periods. And then October nineteenth is our middle school rake day. It's a good opportunity for our community service from our middle school students. Hopefully, we have really nice weather and it is a productive day for our students and. An opportunity to serve our community. So those are the updates from our, our secondary principals. So if there are questions. Please don't hesitate to reach out to him if there's any other comments or questions. With that, I'm gonna close that one and we'll bring up our activities director. Rick, come on up. Hear all of our activities.
Well, as break approaches, that means our fall season's about to wrap up the regular seasons. So it's kind of bittersweet moments there, but we're looking forward to watching our students compete throughout the finish of their seasons and throughout their sections and whole seasons. Like David said, we wrapped up our homecoming week last week, a lot of excitement in the building. And with that, we hosted our first night football game. So big thank you to all the electrical companies that helped us get. Power back to our scoreboard tower, lights on both sides of the fields with a generator on that visitor sideline as well. So it was just fun to see the community and the atmosphere back underneath the lights again. So it was a nice way to cap off the week. I'm working on finalizing our winter schedules and getting those posted online. Still some changes that might happen there, just some things that might occur, shortage of officials or multiple bookings of. Events at the same site. So we're just trying to make sure we get all that squared away before we post stuff online and then have to make changes. So still working on that. And I guess I'd like to wrap up by thanking all the people who help out with our events. I know I went to the concession stand a few times, just checking things out and then at halftime to get things for our officials. It was buzzing in there, the lines were full and packed and people were getting their snacks just to. Help enjoy the experience a little bit. And it was awesome to see our NHS workers in there doing a great job. Pumping out tons of popcorn. And all the other people, scorekeepers, ticket takers, concession stand workers. Or volunteers, officials, spotters, line judges, timers, announcers, liberal judge, bookkeepers, music, live stream team. Students, I forgot anybody else, I apologize, but all those people help make our events possible. So if it wasn't for all those people who are. Some of them volunteering their time, some of them, you know, working after they worked their ten, eight, ten, twelve hour day already. Coming in to help us out. So it just makes it a good experience for all of our students, fans and community, so. If anybody's looking for, or looking to help out in the future, please reach out to me, we'll find a way to. Get more ticket takers and anybody who's looking to do things like that will find a spot for you.
One question about basketball, with the shot clock coming, are we prepared for that yet, or is that something we still have to deal with?
So we, it was approved last year. And so we got those installed in our gym. This is a transition year for schools that have them installed if they want to use it as kind of like an experimental type thing. Especially for, I've talked to a couple of different associations, especially with our JV. I'm just trying to get our worker who's going to work the clock trained, get the officials trained on it, get coaches and players used to it a little bit. There is one conference in the state that I know has approved it for all their conference play this year already, but for the rest of the state, it is a transition year to.
But next year will be required.
Yep, next year is required for everybody in the state. And so I will, we're gonna reach out to a couple of non-conference schools. Like last year we played at Melrose, we used it there. And so we'll try it with a couple of non-conference schools to see how it goes and work out any kinks and get the officials to practice and.
Talk about the official shortage, I was back down at school and would give notice down there over the last weekend. And they couldn't have a game because the officials were a no-show. Is that something likely to happen here? I mean, there's an extreme shortage, so they had to do a scrimmage. Is that something possibly we could look at here or?
Well, there's always, there's a potential for it. There's, in the last three years, there's been fifty thousand officials who've stopped working. So. We definitely need an influx of people who maybe have some kids who just graduated, who have a knowledge of the game, willing to step up. People who are just sports fans in general, or any sports, any type of fans, I guess. Yeah, we're, it's, it's, it's an issue. There's some football games that are being played on Friday or Thursday nights, just because they. Are trying to work Thursdays and Fridays and some Saturdays. So yes.
To become an official, what you have to do, the public may want to know.
Yeah, so to become an official, reach out to the State High School League, there is actually a contact link on there. And all it would be is to read through the rulebook, take a test, and you. Basically, that's about it. They'll give you some lower level games to get started. I know somebody who just got started actually this year officiating and they're already doing varsity games just because there's such shortage of it, so.
On the other way is to yell at the officials a lot and then we get picked.
That should be the. Be the punishment that is taken. And see how you do it, yeah.
So we sell three referees for the basketball games?
Depends. It doesn't have to be.
Because when you're looking at your shortage to rep, there's ten kids. Personally, I always thought that was nuts. Anyway, having to have three refs watching ten kids.
Up and down the court because they, I mean, they're, they're reffing three, four nights a week. So they're refereeing the JV games and the varsity game, that's a lot of miles to put on the legs.
If there's three of them, that might help with the shortage.
Oh, for sure.
Like it always was.
But.
But then you gotta have the certificality to be able to. Three more nights a week versus having three, where you're going to run a third of a court versus a whole court.
I think, Rick, you just made a comment about the associations that help with the staffing. I think that's something that. We've been fortunate to have a couple of strong associations that have supported Paynesville. Because then they do, you know, they have the teams and they have people that work together pretty consistently. Which has, I think, helped to make things a little bit more fluid or. You don't have the potential of shortage, I think, in the same capacity because you've got kind of a. A cluster of officials that.
Each direction we have an association that we can reach out to, so that definitely helps us. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, next I will pull up our community ed director report. He is actually gearing on. Our cross-country. Team in Kirkobin. So his PAC report that the fall youth continues to increase, lots of new members. They've recently finalized a plan to designate an additional fourteen permanent spots for PAC activity parking. You know, this might, this has been an ongoing work in progress. We had some compromise last winter. Where we, our student body parked in like the back forty, so that our, our. Individuals that had a few more mobility issues had safer access into the pack. So we've continued to work through designating, kind of finding that right balance of PAC parking and student body parking. So there's been a, that's been a work in progress. And I know that we've kind of designated some communication around that parking. One of the things that we've really tried to take a look at is. The slippage and slippery sidewalks and individuals that have mobility issues and. And come to walk in the packs specifically in the winter, when walking on the sidewalks is more difficult. So. That's been one of those, one of those areas. Variety of activities do continue to happen. There's games and tournaments. There was the semi-formal dance. Last Saturday, so I don't know if you guys want to add it all, was it kind of a cool venue?
Yeah, it was really cool. A lot of people came, there were a lot of people were on the dance floor a lot. This was surprising because we had a movie going on. Okay, the Hocus Pocus ones. And I think it was a good balance because a lot of people were dancing, so then they got tired, they went, it was good, it was, a lot of people had fun.
Good, good. I saw some pictures and it looked like kind of a cool, different venue, so that was kind of fun. They're in the, also for the PAC, in the process of developing an equipment upgrade plan. Some of the equipment that's in the fitness center is. The inaugural equipment as of twenty-one years. So they're looking at. You know, making sure that they've got a replacement cycle for some of those older pieces of equipment. The fall brochure is, the registrations are strong and the winter brochure is going to be coming out soon. And obviously, if there are any specific program requests, Matt is, is very, has a great team to. To work through any of those requests and try to pull together some offerings. PAWS currently has ninety-nine school year registrants, so that's awesome. You know, it is a great staff that works in the PAWS program. And I think that's part of what makes the demand for that program so solid. So thank you to the PAC staff. The Bulldog livestream, they've been, had a successful fall, hoping to add some playoff games into that broadcast, so that would be nice as well. And then just a reminder about the Bulldog Bark, that one's had twenty views and, and shares over. The last publication. Any questions, feel free to reach out to Mr. Dick Hosen and. Or you can ask me if there's anything that's, that's pressing as well. So then the last one that we have is, I have a, a technology director report. Yesterday was Jonah's quasi-last day. He did put together his report for us though, so we could kind of get a final. Two cents of what was happening in the technology world. So our E-Rate program has completed. So E-Rate, remember, is a five-year process. And he just finalized some new wifi access points. Some battery backups, so that if we have, if we lose power, we still have access to our wifi, still have access to. Some of our technologies, you'll see that as one and two, that it really is about supporting, having access and supporting in emergency and crisis. So whether it's a loss of energy and, but then our students can stay online. Able to secure, or secure our doors, make sure that we have communication. Obviously, our phones are all internet-based, so. Making sure everything stays up and on point. Number three, you'll see that Jonah makes a few recommendations about considerations for the district as you move into the request. If you move into the request to renew the technology levy in a couple of years. One of the things that he's mentioned and kind of wanted the district to keep in mind is the age of things. Such as access points, switches, some of that technology hardware, the stuff that is. Makes our access feasible and viable. And when, when the board considers moving forward with the technology levy. He thought that would be something for you all to consider about getting in front of a purchasing cycle. To make sure that that infrastructure stays robust and up to date. So. That's something for you all to consider in the future. And then number four was just a, a note of thanks. And. So that's what I have for the technology update today. Just as an aside, that position has closed. We have two applicants that will be interviewed toward the, hopefully by the end of this week. We will have a hire in the near future. All right, so buildings and grounds, the only, the only other piece that I think I will add to that is. I'm gonna echo the thank you to our electrical companies that came and gave support to. Our district in order to make football happen. I know that there's a lot of concern about that. And I do know that. I, I saw a lot of really happy fans enjoying the football game. So thank you to Design Electric and Wilmer Electric. For making those things possible for us. So that was, that was wonderful. And that's what I have for updates for communication.
Very much. We'll move on to referendum discussion and we'll get to you.
Okay, so all, all of these items that I'm, I'm gonna just briefly touch on are not new. So I'm not necessarily going to share them as much as I wanted to put them in as a reference again, the operating, we've had. On the referendum, I'm gonna just like all the way to the end, so I can talk through the dates and what we've had for meetings. So we've met, we have the Sportsman's Den in Lake Henry, we had the Paynesville Area Center. The Green Roof Building on Monday, September twenty-sixth. I was invited into one of our local churches for some good discussion as well. Some kind of common themes or questions that have come through, I've tried to just provide clarity on. There's, unfortunately, they have not been heavily attended. I would like to see more attendance, just to make sure that people. And maybe people have good information and they know the, the accurate information. At the Green Roof Center. One of the, the things that I was a little concerned about was. Just how people may not have, they might think it's accurate information and it's, it gets shared circularly. But it's not accurate information. And so one of the individuals attending the meeting just made a comment on how. He was hanging out with a, a group of people and some information that wasn't accurate was kind of circling through and. Without, in the absence of the right information, then this information is spread. And so I would just encourage people. Please, if you have an opportunity to come on out, we are gonna host a virtual, which I'm hoping to probably have. Maybe even the Monday before the election, just so we can really get, have kind of a last minute. Do you know of stuff? But again, watching, paying attention to those dates. As a board, have, are there any questions or, or comments or things that you have heard that you would likely to be addressing differently? In these meetings?
I heard a lot of positive stuff out of the one you had at Grace Church. Only thing I heard about. But it was pretty much everything I heard was positive.
And at the, at, at the church, I did not do a formal presentation. I just really opened it up to. To say, what have you heard or what would you like to know? I really just put it together as a, you know, a question and answer. Many of the items that are in the presentation were asked, and so I was able to share. Information from the, from the presentation, but just, it was a definitely. A very good conversational interaction.
I think my biggest takeaway. At the Green Roof, it was Bob, that maybe the time was wrong, six o'clock was too early and eight o'clock was better. And I'm thinking, no. It wouldn't have mattered. I, I think you almost have to. Rather than just say, we're gonna have a meeting here, there, when you went into the church, I don't know how many people stayed for that, but I'm sure it was more than. Came to the other meetings.
A lot more.
And to be able to get, in the future anyway, to look at ways to, to go to the Lions Club, to go to other, try to get into other churches. Is the way you meet people because they just won't come out otherwise, you just.
Go where the people are instead of the people to come to.
I mean, it's disappointing every time I can remember years ago, Bob going down to the cafe to meet people and he sat there and I was in another booth and watched and nobody ever came. He wasted an hour of his time, but you know, he was available, but it's just, I don't know, it's what people are.
There are always, that's all I've ever seen at those. You have to, you have to be there. The hope is that the person or two that show up, talk to about forty, fifty people. And then we're successful. But. Communication is a really tough thing these days because there's not one form of communication. It's not like back in the sixties where it was all through. One entity and then it was paid to press. Nowadays, you have every kind of communication there is. And every different age group is in a different basket.
So.
Really difficult.
I also created just a kind of a, an FAQ. And this was created based on some feedback. From an individual who watched or kind of scrolled through the presentation and said, you know, I think there's a couple of pieces that you need to highlight. So this fact sheet is just a two-page front and back with, with what the district has already done in order to. Respond to our deficit budgets. And then also what some of the implications would be if it doesn't pass. This is one of the areas where there was often discussion, and it's just a state comparison. Asking, you know, what is it, how do we compare to the average of the state for local optional revenue and your voter-approved revenue? And even if, if our referendum is approved as requested, we are still four hundred and six dollars below the state average. And I think that that was, and, and the individual that suggested I put that together thought that was a pretty important and powerful fact to put out. So. Again, I'm trying to, I guess my point in sharing that is that if people know of information that needs to get out there. Let me know and I'll find a way to, to make sure that that information gets shared.
Do we have any mailers, anything going? Now and then?
There are, I don't know if we, we have not talked about doing a specific postcard per se. I know there are some different committees that are working together, but I don't, I'm not entirely certain. As a district, we have not put together. A flyer yet or a mailer yet. I, I do know that Candy Ojai and Meeker County, our required ballot. Notification went out this week. And with that, I did add. A cover letter because I learned last year that with just a sample ballot and no information, people became confused. So I just put a, a, a cover letter just saying, you know, this is a sample ballot. Take a look at this information, you know, just kind of catch all. And so that information is going out as well. And I have my contact information on there as well. But it does not have specifics beyond the cost per family. And I think that that's probably one of the most critical factors that people look to.
It did have the tax impact on the back.
Yes.
If I recall correctly, the last two larger surveys that we sent out, that was mailed to everybody, a majority of people liked the mail. So if we're missing the mail, I suspect in my mind, we're gonna miss it. Because they're not gonna get the information. Because a lot of the information is really good. It's just, we gotta get it to people. But it was just, I think it showed up in both in some of the comments. Especially on the first one, when we ran the first referendum, there, there were a lot of comments that liked the mail. But if we break it down to whichever is the majority. But if we break it down to whichever is the majority, if we do everything else when we don't do majority, are we really doing justice to give the information to people?
And we certainly.
They all got mailboxes.
We certainly can put together a postcard, um, if there, and, and I'll try to find out exactly what is going out, if there is or if there isn't. And, um, you know, I, I also want to make sure that we're not duplicative, you know, because I guess it maybe doesn't hurt, but, you know, I can certainly look at that.
Well, a number of years ago, we were down at the conference and Centennial was sending information out. And they found at the printers that you could, they could buy a sheet that was this big and basically put your whole presentation on it and they just folded it up and sent it as one, one sheet. And I don't know that, maybe the cost a little more, but, um, when talking about a port card, I'm not sure what anybody's going to get from a postcard.
Sure.
Um, but that's what they did. They just found it to be really cost-effective, going to the printers, finding out how they could get the
Yep.
most, and I, maybe we print them all ourselves and don't really know why we have a little bit.
Yeah, I can do more expl- exploration on that for you.
There was something with the size of the sheet, but they had it all folded up and you unfolded it and you ended up with this like, oh, it's like a map. But goodness, it was all there. It was, it was pretty nice to read what was going on and they were putting four school districts all together.
Oh, sure.
Down there, and it was, it was complicated, but it was a good piece.
And I've, I've had a number of people give me, um, example publications and flyers, and so I've got a lot of great kind of resources to pull from as well. And, um, one that I liked in specific has some, um, a sample ballot and talks through every part of the ballot question and what does it mean and what is the implication and why does it say it that way? And so, if I, there's, I mean, there's a lot of, of ideas out there, Bruce, and I certainly can bring back some ideas for the board. And if that's, I'm absolutely happy to pull together a flyer, you know, hearing that that's.
Your sheets that you have done might be already there.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think you've done a really good job putting the sheets together already. I don't think we need to necessarily be building them.
Yeah.
We just need that information we have in people's hands, and I think that's going to be our best avenue.
And this final document that is on there, the, just the, the document that's being left at community meetings, um, is the fact sheet that was also at the open houses. Um, so it just really speaks to the questions a little bit more specifically. Um, and then, um, it also has your tax impact, and it also speaks to the, the, um, inadequacy and funding from the state of Minnesota. So, those are the, those are the resources that have kind of been out and shared and are, are being, uh, distributed uh, throughout the community. So, um, again, I, I'm, I think it's, we can certainly put together from everything that we have a pretty nice flyer that could go out.
Yeah. Because I got, when there's events hosted and there's a programs, whether it's activity, music, whatever, could one of these be inserted just in the inside of the program so that whoever is there?
Yeah.
That reminds, we talked too about having somebody at the soup sandwich.
Mm-hmm.
Soup sandwich and sun.
And they moved it now Sunday.
That's the thirtieth.
Yeah. So, I'd be willing to sit there and hand out something if we got something.
I'll be there too, so.
Okay, that'd be great, and we can have a stack of these ready for you as well. And then we have the posters from the open house, so that would be great.
Because they're going to be going back at the orphanage, maybe.
Yeah. In the cafeteria.
Catch them in the hallway. The rest, you can come anyway. Buy your tickets.
Well, it's silent auction too, so come spend money.
All right, so any other questions about, uh, the referendum or, um, comments? Just really an update for you. Um.
Time to see professional development summaries.
All right, so, one of the things that I think is, is important for, for the board and the community to know is how, um, how as a district, we kind of bring together professional development that aligns with either our requirements or the strategic plan. And so, I've just attached some resources here for you, and I'm only going to highlight a couple of them because there's a lot in here that you could kind of click through and, and look at if you'd like to. But, um, the first one, the good intentions are not enough. That was a profession, a professional development that came to, um, uh, it was presented to our certified staff, and it's, it really, it did two things. One is it met the cultural competency requirement that is a, um, that's a part of the relicenser for all of our certified staff members. Um, but I think the other thing that it did is it really posed some really important questions about how we see things just through, um, the lens that we just naturally bring to the table. So, I, I attached this, um, for everybody to kind of take a look at. Uh, one of my favorite activities that I'll just, um, and I'm, I'm just going to speak kind of generically to it because if you ever have an opportunity to do it, it's, it's a, I think it's a pretty, um, a pretty powerful activity, but it's, um, walking through a narrative of imagining, you know, being in an airport and how you see different people, um, with different roles and different jobs. Um, everything from, um, who is changing the garbage, who's taking the tickets, who is your runway worker, who's your flight attendant, who's your pilot? And who's the person that you dread seeing coming down your, your seat to sit next to you, you know? So, it really is, it was an opportunity to just step back and, and think about your immediate reactions to things. Um, and then we just had a lot of really good discussion around how that can in, influence and impact us and our interactions with other individuals. So, it really was a, a powerful, uh, a powerful event. Um, I, the, the presenter is in here, um, his name is Perry. Uh, he is, um, as a, was a former administrator, he was a teacher. Um, he now works for Resource Training and Solutions in a couple of different capacities. Um, but his, you know, his story was also very powerful, and I thought it was a really nice way to connect with our teachers, um, through just like some, I guess, authentic interaction. So, at least that's how the feedback that I got from a couple of individuals, um, is, is that it was, it was a, um, productive dialogue and discussion. So, um, I just shared that with you. Um, if you take a look at our strategic plan, we talk about, um, social wellness, emotional wellness and physical wellness, and this is a really important part of our social wellness and understanding how we are socially. So, um, that's where that came from. Um, the next thing I wanted to share with you was, um, an opportunity that I had to see Joe Schmidt from, uh, Channel Five, is that his channel? Um, oh geez, I should have vetted that out before I made a statement, but y'all would recognize the voice of Joe Schmidt. Um, but really, one of the things that he, um, he talked about is as a leader and just really as a, and all of us are leaders in our own way, and I think that that's something that, that we need to remember and share more often, that we all lead in many different capacities. But, um, he talked about, um, the power of, of the little things and how the little things matter. And he shared this video from, um, that I'm going to just share with you, and it's, it's about six minutes. So, you know, bear with me and then, you know, I'll kind of, um, brush over the others a little bit more, but I think it's worth the six minutes. Uh, so, let me get this shared.
This is Creighton Durham Hall High School in St. Paul. Something happened in this lunchroom in 2001 that is still having an impact today. Joe Mauer sat at this table back then.
Obviously, on a personal level, I'd like to, to do better than I did last year, but, you know, bottom line is we need to win more games.
Minnesota Twins fans know all about Joe Mauer. He was a six-time All-Star, three-time American League batting champ. And 2009 American League Most Valuable Player. An amazing fifteen-year career. When he was in high school, Joe was simply one of the best athletes Minnesota ever produced. He was recruited by every major college football program to be their starting quarterback. He was an All-State Guard in basketball. But baseball was his best sport. And with the very first pick in the amateur draft, the Minnesota Twins, the hometown team, took Joe Mauer out of Creighton Durham Hall High School. Joe was the big man on campus. Hi, I'm Joe Schmidt. I had the pleasure of covering Joe Mauer when he was a star at Creighton Durham Hall High School. Plus, I covered him his entire major league career with the Minnesota Twins. But this is not a sports story, it's an impact story. Back in 2001, Joe would walk a young student by the name of Mike Hawley to the lunchroom every day and invite him to sit down at his table, the coolest table on campus. What, what did it mean to you to have Joe say, come and join us at our table?
It felt empowering, like I was, like I belonged.
Mike is blind, and he was not getting a lot of invitations to lunch.
Yes, as my father was fond of saying, he kind of took me under his wing.
He took you under his wing, guess what, he, he wants to reconnect with you and he's here right now.
Hey, Mike, how you doing, man?
Good, how are you?
Good to see you, it's been too long.
Yes.
Two decades later, a reunion.
I was going to say, now, what are you doing?
Yeah, well, I got three kids now, I have twin daughters.
In the same lunchroom, at the same table.
Because I remember you had to catch a red-eye flight from Anaheim.
With two old friends.
You know, I always could count on that pool table my senior year as the place where I wanted to sit, which was, which was nice.
It was like, hey, you want to come, uh, we're going to the same place, let's, let's go down there. And, um, then it turned into every day.
Joe and Mike's stories included in my book, Silent Impact. What's silent impact?
I was the non-athlete, but that was okay because they made me feel special just sitting there with them.
Well, we make our biggest impressions when we're not trying to be impressive.
It's amazing how much you really find out, how much you have in common as we shared lunch and as the year progressed, I got to know them really well.
So, I put my reporters cap on and I found six of the guys who sat around that table every day, twenty-one years ago, with Joe Mauer and Mike Hawley. And I said, what impact did it have on you? And they all came back and started telling stories like it was yesterday. They said that, they said that Wednesdays was pizza day at Creighton Durham Hall. And Mike would invariably spill some crumbs on his clothing, pizza sauce on his chin or his cheek. Joe Mauer would nonchalantly grab a napkin, wipe them off and brush them off and get them ready for his next class. By the end of the first quarter, they were all doing this.
Tony Leesman was at our table and he says hello, by the way.
Good, good.
But Joe was having an impact and the impact he had was real, it was powerful, it was profound, it was contagious, and it lasted a long, long time.
You know, it, it doesn't seem like too long ago since we were here.
If more athletes followed his example, there'd be a lot fewer lonely kids without him. Someone to eat with.
You treat people how you want to be treated. You treat people with respect and usually that's returned. Same thing, Mike showed me that same respect.
Thank you for the time you put in and the kindness you showed for the short year we did have together, and I'm, uh, a better person for it.
Well, Mike, I can say the same thing.
Bullies are forgotten.
Lisa, she had those cookies.
Oh, yes.
Cookies, oh yeah, so we were front and center. That was by design, right, Mike?
Yes.
Kindness can become legendary.
Walking in here, there's a lot of great memories.
You never know when somebody in your school needs you to acknowledge them. Say hi to them.
Yes, that helped a great deal.
Be nice to them.
Our table was a lot of fun.
When in doubt, do the right thing.
That's right, that's right.
Thumbs Up for Mental Health is there for you. For information, go to their website, thumbsupformentalhealth.org, or email them at info@thumbsupformentalhealth.org.
All right, so, um, so he is, he shared this as a portion of his, um, his, I guess, keynote speech about impact and understanding how, um, you never know what your impact is and you don't know how some little stroke of kindness goes a long way. And so, I wanted to share that just as a, again, when I think about some of the work that our students did last year through the Culture and Climate Committees and the, of the World Cafes, having just an understanding that, um, kindness really does go a long way with your, with your kids. And, um, and that was the, the No One Sits Solo is the name of the video, and it just was an opportunity to, to share one person's impact, um, long-term. So, wanted to share that with you as well. Um, the other one that I wanted to, um, walk through, Courage Under Fire is a podcast about a book. Um, it's the session, the book is called Escaping the School Leader's Dumb Take, How to Prevail When Others Want You to Drown. Um, I think it, it's primarily targeted toward like, um, principals, superintendent kind of leaders, but the, the message of the story really is how to kind of navigate, um, when people don't want you to be successful. And I think that that is another one of those lessons that we can learn and pick up on no matter what type of, of role we have. So, I included that as well. And then the final one is repair, restore and reclaim. And one of the things, um, that I wanted to share about this, um, slideshow is really the, um, the power of, um, just, um, paying attention to, so, the, the St. Croix River Education District, um, is, is a district, uh, organization that's very similar to the one that I came from, uh, Masiko. But they really, as a staff, came back and recognized, um, how difficult it was to return to school after, um, having our COVID experiences. And so, she talked about how she worked as an organization, and they started this in small teams, kind of repairing the rapport within the teams. Um, and then, over the course of this year, they brought it to a systems level of repairing relationships, kind of restoring the focus and then reclaiming your energy moving forward. So, um, again, I think these are things that I think about as a, when I look at our strategic plan and how we are looking to move forward and how we've looked at, um, coming out of COVID, we had a lot of challenges and we've had a, a number of, um, bumps. And I think that there were some really good nuggets within all of these, um, trainings and opportunities that I wanted to share and, and let people, um, peruse and take a look at. So, um, that's why I have them shared, um, and, and wanted to just let you all kind of know some of the things that I've been trying to bring back into the district. So, those are really the, the key points that I have for you. Um, and if there aren't any questions, I'll turn it over to you, Thomas.
I'd just like to make a comment, though. I am, I went through the information and I had emailed you about it too, that I'm just very thankful that this information is being presented. It didn't ever come from a place of deficit, it came from a place of, of awareness because I think some people can get caught in their envoying learning experience that I was wrong, and it's not about that. Um, and I just appreciate that our teachers and staff and students are going through these, um, trainings because I think it is really important, because sometimes people just aren't aware. They didn't know by saying something or it's unintended and talking about the implicit and explicit bias, I think is just, it's just a self-reflection. Um, so, I was just very happy to see, uh, what you're all doing.
And that, that work did come from, um, our Professional Development Committee, um, and that was one of the things that, uh, when they also reviewed the bylaws of, um, staff development and what it is that our staff development should be focusing on, um, they felt like it aligned really well with that, with that context too. So, um, they, that was their, their charge and focus.
Anything else? Otherwise, we'll request for information.
I had a community member approach me and ask why we are renting the Elko Building for the wrestling team. I, of course, corrected him. Have we ever rented the Elko Building?
No, we did not.
That was the wrestling club, right?
Very clever.
Yes. So, I just want that out there, that we have never rented the Elko Building.
It's going to be wrestling.
Yeah, moving forward, it's going to be really, really little kids wrestling.
Yeah.
And no part of the wrestling club.
Yeah. Well, good for you to straighten them out because it's that little.
Well, they came to me specifically to ask from a group.
I think it's out there.
And, but yeah, and the person who had told him this was positive, this was the truth. So I just want to get it out there that we have never rented the Elko building.
Anything else? Hearing nothing while during the meetings.